Mr. Scott, can we call the roll?
Yes, Mrs. Albright.
Here.
Mrs. Bell.
Here.
Mrs. Jared. Okay, Mrs. Leoni.
Here.
Mrs. Olson.
Here.
Mr. Redenhouse. Mr. Scott. Here. Mr. Shrubel.
Here.
And Mrs. Thompson.
Here.
Okay, procedures for public participation, prepared statements that are to be read to the board, if you have one, should have a copy presented to the board president prior to their being addressed. Comments on agenda items will be made by rising and approaching the microphone, stating your name and address, and signing in on the sheet provided. You'll be granted up to three minutes to address the board. Your three-minute time limit will start when you begin to speak. When three minutes are over, you'll be asked to be seated. Any item that is not on the agenda, as well as agenda items to be acted upon, comments can be made at the designated section at the end of the agenda. And so, there aren't any agenda edits for announcements. There will be an executive session following the meeting to discuss personnel and negotiations. Normally, I would now have the superintendent's report, but I have two things I would like to say before that happens. So, for anybody who does not have high school students, this is a note that Mr. Spores sent out to our high school students earlier today. He wanted to keep everyone up to date with information from today's events. Today, after school, some of our students were involved in a serious car accident. The students were transported to the hospital via ambulance. Please keep them and their families in your thoughts. If any students reach out or express they need assistance, please direct them to the counseling department. If you have another colleague who needs support, if you or another colleague needs support at the high school, the administrative team has information for support services available in the offices, and we will share more when we can. And then I have a second comment that I need to read. It's with great sorrow that we are here, in part, to commemorate the life and legacy of Greg Miller, who served as our first head of security at Daniel Boone School District. Greg was a cherished member of our community, a man who devoted himself wholeheartedly to the protection and prosperity of our students and staff. His passion for safeguarding their well-being was unmatched, and he embodied the ideals of a true leader in the field of school security, raising the bar for excellence in every aspect of his work. The loss of such a beloved figure is a profound loss to us all, and we find solace in the knowledge that Greg's impact on our community will endure. His commitment to ensuring the safety and security of our students and staff has left a lasting impression, and he will be remembered for generations to come. On behalf of the school board, the administration, students and staff, I'd like to extend our heartfelt condolences to Greg's family. His memory will be treasured by all who had the privilege of knowing him, and his dedication to the well-being of our students and staff will always be remembered. I only knew him as a member of the Daniel Boone family, but by looking out over Facebook, he's had many, many jobs at different schools and in law enforcement across the county. I can see how many lives he touched beyond our walls, and I wanted to call before a moment of silence to remember his life. Thank you, everyone. And moving on from that, I'd now like to hand the mic over to Dr. Cooper for the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm sorry, my report this evening, just to extend an invitation to the members of the board for our next community discussion sponsored by our office, Community Relations and Equity Awareness, scheduled for this Wednesday at 6:00 p.m. in the middle school library through entering the building via door number one. Again, that's at 6 o'clock, and extended our invitation for you all to attend. Second item is some good news with regard to members of the high school. Five of our students have been most recently selected for the Pennsylvania Music Educators Association, which is PMEA, District 10 choir. Three were selected for PMEA District 10 orchestra, and three students were selected to the PMEA District 10 band. I'd like to offer congratulations to the students and their advisors for this outstanding recognition and accomplishment and their participation at that District 10 level. The last item, again, some additional positive news here. Both our high school and middle school TSA students had a conference this past weekend up at Stroudsburg Junior High School, where there were many students at both the high school and the middle school levels competing from 12 different schools. And just some of the highlights, the high school had top-three finishers. In the top-three finishers, there were two first-place finishes in team events and one first-place finish in the individual event, five second-place finishes in team events, and two third-place finishes in team events. The middle school had, or the middle school had multiple winners as well. They had some of their highlights, the top-three finishers, one first-place finish in team events, one second-place finish in team events, one second-place finish in individual events. Again, those were just the top-three. There were multiple additional finishes up through, including eighth place, and multiple state qualifiers. More than just the top-three finishers do qualify for the states in TSA, so we'll have quite a representation from both the high school and the middle school students in the state competition, which will be next. So, I want to offer congratulations to those students and all the students who competed and their advisors for this outstanding recognition and accomplishments, and would wish them best of luck in competing at the next level in the state competition. That concludes my report.
Okay, for the student board representatives' report.
At the high school, academically, our 50 students completed the ASMR this past January, and the next one is scheduled for April. For extracurriculars, our winner's awards are officially wrapping up this past week. And for cultural, the whole school wore red in honor of Matt and Mary.
The middle school academics, an analysis of a winter math benchmark showing grade improvements, especially in math. Also, the sixth-grade math team scored six points higher than expected goals. Extracurriculars, the middle school took courses that replaced the Westchester University Golden Round competition on Sunday, January 22nd. Eighth grader Matt Swarkwood won the cheer jump-off out of over 30 contestants, and seventh grader Rochaer won the tumble off out of the 16 contestants. In addition, the traditional competition squad was awarded a HED to American Superior Nationals in Orlando, Florida, the highest honor they could have awarded. For cultural, the community discussion will be held in the middle school this month. The competition, the topic will be equity as individuality with fundamental questions, what's fun, what's the men, this will be discussed on Wednesday, February 8th, 6th, and the middle school library.
Thank you all. I did see some photos on social media of Eric going here and read a Friday, and for anybody who doesn't know, Eric passed away, he was in middle school. This would have been his graduating year if he was still with us, and so it's good to see his little classmates supporting him. Thank you, guys. Okay. Finance. As I said, not the best one. So, we have four items that'll be on the agenda for next, for the next meeting. Any comments, questions, concerns on the finance items for the board?
Yeah, I have a question. So, macro, I didn't know that, I know in the last curriculum instruction, we had talked about it, but I didn't, I don't remember us actually putting it on. I remember since something about the next meeting in February, it would come out of committee and come onto the agenda.
If I remember correctly, the last meeting, we did not have enough people to approve it at committee, is that correct? That's what I remember.
We, I was to understand that we were still vetting, vetting it out. I did not believe that it would be on the agenda tonight either.
Well, it's not being, it's not being voted on today, so there still will be one more curriculum instruction meeting before...
Right, because I had had some questions that I wanted to answer before we voted on it.
Okay, so, I guess, if, do you want to have that discussion now, or would you rather have it during curriculum instruction?
I'll do it during curriculum, yeah.
Okay, so, that would leave us the opportunity, like, if we decided that we wanted to delay it at that time, we can either, we could remove, we could have an agenda edit to remove it from the agenda when we meet next time.
That's fine. I was just surprised to see it on there.
It was, it doesn't say that it was approved at committee, it was just as presented, yeah.
Yeah, okay, alright.
Yeah, it is, we're at a bit of a disadvantage because of just the way the timing of the committee, the hold versus the vote meeting happened. So, I know, and I'll sit in on that. I'll just get the question answered.
Yep, yep.
Any other questions, comments, concerns? Any public comment on finance items? Programs, we have five things there. Any comments, questions, concerns from the board? Any public comment on programs? Personnel, got some retirements, resignations, leaves, appointments. Any comments, questions, concerns from the board? Any public comment? Presentations by board members. Mr. Scott, any secretary's correspondence?
I have nothing.
Okay.
I have nothing.
That's okay. And Mr. Jared isn't here, will give the VCIU report. I actually don't know if they met this month. We'll get the VCIU report from him next time. He's here. Does that sound okay, Dr. Cooper?
Yes.
BCTC report, Ms. Thompson.
We met on January 25th. We just put over the Articles of Three, then again, it all created a large savings for their budget for next year, because we'll have transportation and teachers had a drop. We will be paying for the church each next year. They'll be having an open house for fifth graders and ninth graders, and they'll be having a summer camp as well for sixth or eighth grade. And the next meeting is February 23rd.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Thompson from the board? Legislative, anything? Mr. Shrubel?
No, we think about on February 14th, we are next.
21st.
21st, yes.
Any other board reports? Any public comment on presentations by board members? Enrollment, any questions for the administration on headcount? Any public comment? Curriculum and instruction?
Yes, we met on January 23rd, and we did look over the program.
Yeah, I remember.
Yeah, and they, and had a couple of questions. We were able to look it over the samples. We talked about the district counseling plan as well.
Okay. Any questions for Ms. Albright on that?
Next meeting is, what, I say 27?
Yeah, okay. And any public comment on curriculum? Extracurricular? Oh, I apologize. I'm sorry, I was...
Grace Markle, County Birdsboro. So, I have a question about this math curriculum. Are you going just with the one that we weren't looking at, or are there other ones that are not real, with DEI?
The, there were four on the sheet that we were looking at.
So, how much, I guess, any, I mean, I know this is public comment, but any input from the community about not choosing one over the other? Like, do you...
They weren't involved in the, just bringing, just bringing that, having a chance to look at the different products here.
So, you have to go with exactly what was just before that you were given to look at?
Well, they vetted out, what, four or five?
Yeah.
Okay. And I, and I, what, I'm sorry, what?
No, I was asking the cell to do this point.
Oh, I didn't know that was on or not. Yeah, I, Mrs. Leoni and I had some questions that we had approached, which is why we were asking if, we did, we were surprised that I had misunderstood that this had gone, it was the final recommendation, but I think we're still in talks, as far as I'm concerned.
And there will be another discussion?
Yes, at the next curriculum, if you want to, in two weeks.
Yeah.
If you have the curriculum, is that...
It's only three weeks.
And is there a way to get...
Oh, it's in three weeks.
It's the 27th, because two weeks is present day, that's...
Oh, sorry.
Oh, good.
Is there a way to get, if I can help you, I get a copy of the list of what you've been...
Yeah, absolutely. And that if you just send me your specific concerns, I can bring them up.
Okay, perfect.
Do you know what I mean?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other public comment on curriculum instruction? And we are moving on to extracurricular.
We met tonight.
Right.
And we did a big project on our major course, opening this 402. We also, as mentioned a little bit earlier, cheer is going to be on to the International Organization in Florida.
And that's on the agenda to approve that, that... Okay.
And then we also have a proposal, which is also on the initiative group, of innovation to middle school for a town hall, intermediate center. Do you ever need it, and there are probably boosters for a upgrade for the intermediate center.
Okay. For you, I'm assuming, Coralance, I would assume this for you, what, for...
Opened it to your home and your band for some general music programs.
Alright, okay. Next meeting will be March 13th. That's the word on the street? Okay. Public comment on, oh, any questions for, for Ms. Bell from the board for extracurricular? Any public comment on extracurricular? Facilities and transportation?
We met this evening. We met this evening, and we have a high school projector screen that needs to be replaced. It's over 20 years old and falling apart from the motor now, and so we are going to be bringing that forward for voting committee, and we're going to do an up-to-vote. They can spend up to $67, $6,975, and that's what labor to install and whatnot.
Are we still getting, are we still getting quotes on that one?
Sorry, didn't they just say it was $7,000?
It said $6,975.
To be exact, it's roughly seven, he rounded it up.
I thought it was $69.
He gave me the number.
He gave us that.
I'm not saying, he said you could spend it for $69, the guy said it was $7,000.
He said $7,000.
Now, is that?
I hope you get $7,000.
Is that the projector screen in the auditorium? Is that, is that the one in the auditorium?
You can't have it, it's $10.
Yes.
$7,000.
In the auditorium, is that what I'm hearing? That's why it's so expensive? Because it's gigantic?
Yes.
Okay.
16 by 16.
All right. Go on.
Buckey's going to come to the rest.
Okay.
Maybe.
We did talk about the firearms in the building, and he's going to get two quotes, because the other one's pretty old as well. The one is on the other side of the building, so they were looking at potentially doing one system instead of two separate ones, and so he's going to get prices on them apart and then together, so that's not up for, really, there wasn't much more discussion after that.
Okay.
We are bringing forward, there's another HPC unit down, and I believe that was at the middle school, and so we're going to bring that forward, and he was able to get the exact same price we were on the last one, and that would be $16,400.
Did you happen to get an update on the, there were a whole bunch of heating and condenser and, you know, water-moving repairs that needed to be done, both at the middle school and the high school. Did you get an update on it, that they're done?
We did not get an update on whether they were...
That's fine, I was just curious.
There was roof updates at the middle school.
Oh, the roof, yeah.
Roof, so there was leaks, so that's fixed.
Good, good.
The fence was completed, and it's now regrouped traffic the way they anticipated around the playground there.
Good.
There's an Eagle Scout project that was fully funded by the Legion, so...
Wow, congratulations. That's, that's for the, that's for the picnic tables?
Yep.
That's awesome.
So, congratulations to the student that's doing it, and thank the Legion for providing the money for it.
And thank you to Mr. Withers, our facilities director, for making yourself available to that student to help move that project along.
And then there was a playground equipment that's pretty old and having trouble with the IC and PC, and it was interesting, they had a student come forward, a fourth grader. His name was Alex Weaver.
Okay.
And he pulled together plans for the entire project, including different things, pulled together plans for that. He audited other students, felt that there should be a wheelchair swing put in, so kids with wheelchairs maybe have something to do. They're looking at monkey bars, and then something he recommended that he had did some research on, is a dodgeball pit. And not only did he pull together all the plans, but he also pulled together all pricing for it, so it was pretty cool. And so...
I think he's running, he's running for board next week.
He should be running for board, exactly, but the principal...
I've got, I've got, like, flashbacks to dodgeball, though. You're going to have to convince me on that one.
It's not dodgeball.
It's gaga ball.
It's gaga ball, oh, okay.
I thought it was like dodgeball.
All right, I know what that is.
Kids parents start coming, playing.
Dodgeball.
Dodgeball.
No, that's what, but, those are all, those are all excellent ideas.
I'm pretty excited about that.
Those are really excellent ideas.
He pulled all the pricing together, no vote, just it was kind of cool thing.
Sure.
And so, we asked that maybe we can get him to come out and do a presentation for us.
Oh, that'd be neat.
For the principals, and the principals now have been providing for both schools.
Cool.
See what they want to add or take away or whatnot.
Very cool, all right.
It was actually really cool. And for facility, I mean, for transportation, we did get presented an entire presentation, an entire presentation on bus control, camera system.
Okay.
They're all in now, and it was, it was some pretty cool stuff to do, so it's exciting. But then we talked about it, saves one child, also having a good day.
Okay. All right, and then the next transportation and facilities committee is March 13th. Any questions for Mr. Shrubel on facilities and transportation from the board? Any public comment on facilities and transportation? Okay, moving on to finance. Hi. I don't, it was so long ago, it was two and a half days ago, or it was probably just two weeks ago, but I don't remember what we talked about.
It was just a pretty, I think that we decided for the budget now.
Right, and we picked a day for the budget meeting, I think.
We picked the March 7th.
All right.
We're going to hold around for everybody, it's a way in finance, it should be next week.
Right, so, our, so we didn't talk about much, because we had just, we had just approved the audits the month before. So, our next finance committee meeting is February 27th, and the budget workshop meeting is March 7th, and that's the big one, right? That's the, just to let the board members know, that's the one where the principals and the administrators in charge of different parts of the administration come with their big, like, really long itemized list of where all the money's going, so it'll be super fun. So, we'll be right here, March 7th.
Bring your popcorn.
Yeah, and it's open to the public, so. Any questions for Ms. Bates from the board? Any public comment? Policy review, Mr. Scott?
We are meeting this evening. We have six policies to discuss, but we can only get to five. So, policies we discuss tonight were principles of government, government, governance, I'm sorry, and leadership, that, okay, enrollment of students, don't give non-resident students, graduation and dressing room make. So, these are some of the topics we had today. They're pretty straightforward, nothing really changed. Our next policy meeting will be on March 13th, and that's it.
Okay. And any questions for Mr. Scott from the board? Next policy committee meeting is March 13th. Any public comment on policy? Technology, Mr. Shrubel?
This is a short meeting, and my notes were taken with a potential arm that was not functioning very well, so I'm going to do my best here. The equipment replacements, starting K through eight iPad replacements are going to be happening this year, and we're going to need to approve that in February. They'll ship in March, and they'll swap in April as planned. And it goes in keeping with our entire process of trying to flatten out technology expense, instead of having this massive bill, trying to budget for it, kind of flattened it out by leasing them, and he's done a really good job of being able to get early on leases that made sense.
Right.
Paying it the same, upgrading equipment, having new equipment, technology's good, and keep the payment the same, so it works out really well. I think that's very important to be able to do that. We did get a question about being able to sell them, and so, there was a lot of talk about that. There's a volunteer. The problem that we have is, is trying to coordinate. How many do we keep? After we keep them, how many get sold? What do we do with the ones that don't get sold? And so...
In addition to that, you know, when we're, when they only reach the end of life every four years, there are like three other groups of kids that have graduated in that intervening time, so who do we offer them to?
Yeah, there was, there was a lot of challenges, but you know, he did say if somebody wanted to come forward and sit down and try and go over what it would take to actually put that process together, he'd be willing to talk about it.
Yes.
But right now, it's not something he has the time to do, or I can't even imagine trying to solicit. It was a thought, it was a good thought, I just wanted to make sure I answered it. And then, website, community engagement, training over the last few weeks, it's connecting all pieces now, and it should be a launching, training for staff is coming, and targeted launches in June. That was the end of the panel.
Okay. Next meeting will be February 27th. And maybe, maybe you can head up somebody else to help you write down the notes.
Yeah, I should be writing by then.
Okay. Any comments or questions for Mr. Shrubel from the board? Any public comment on technology? Moving on to old business, minutes from the two previous meetings, any comments, concerns from the board? Any public comment? So, I have nothing for new business, so it is time for public comment. And one over here, are you on there? This is, this one's on, okay.
I'm on, everyone's on, I'm trying.
Okay.
Up, down, we're in Amity. I sent you two emails on behalf of my husband. I'm actually speaking on the one, this is the second email sent. Title Pronouns Lessons Should Start in Pre-K According to Some of the Largest Teachers Unions in America. And I write, how did we ever survive in life into adulthood without fixating on someone's preferred pronouns? How did we ever get in life without emphasizing our sexual preferences publicly? Could you just imagine in nineteen ninety-five introducing yourself as your name for pronouns? And announce your sexual preference every time you enter a new class? Introduce yourself to someone new? And making everyone use your assigned labels happened two thousand and five, putting that in your email signatures? Wouldn't have happened. And the scary part is, is all these assignments that we are choosing for ourselves, that our children are choosing, it's almost like labeling and tagging cattle. And we don't look at it that way because we're kind of blind to what this coordinated effort is into almost like segregating society into, oh, you're Hispanic, you're black, you're Asian. Oh, you're this pronoun, you're this such a preference. It's almost like it's this self-segregating mentality that they're instilling into our children that I think is absolutely criminal. The fact that a teacher wouldn't want to push that here in the United States of America is absolutely appalling.
Story you told.
And so, and I mentioned that one of our favorite restaurants is Ilfordale. And one of the coolest things that they do is after you have your meal, they'll give you a lemon sorbet to clear your palate. To then present you to, present you with desserts that you can actually taste. You know, especially if you're heavy girlie here. But I think Daniel Boone should be the lemon sorbet to the children to cleanse their palate, to be a reinforcement of what is a solid truth foundation. I unfortunately believe we're gonna be amongst the last generations to understand what true foundational truth is and then understand what a truth is of somebody else to then have a healthy mindset around it. But if we're teaching our children this is solid foundation of truth, then we're gonna really confuse our children. I really do, I do believe there is a constant, it's just like a tree, it will always be a tree. I don't go to a preacher and say, can I get a cat? What's the cat's preferred gender identity? Which, which age birth, the male cat or the girl cat? It's, it's nonsensical. It's nonsensical. And so right now in Los Angeles, they're instilling urinals in women's bathrooms, if you don't know that. Because women, according to them, can pee standing up. I'll be appalled if that ever happens to Daniel Boone. I'll be appalled. But my daughter also came home with a social health contract that I had to sign and she had to sign so they can address social health issues. That is a concern. I want to make sure that we are addressing what is an actual health concern and what is considered social politics. If anything, you have to address this.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Shane, I'm like thirty-five years old already. I came early to be an expert, extra, uh, extra killer.
Okay.
Meeting.
Good.
And my focus was on the fairness of how the money's being distributed. The two people in back had concerns about this whole play and how that is being funded. And back before all the budgets cuts, they were giving the, a stipend plus a budget plus the money that they would get from ticket sales would kind of stay in that budget for them to do what they would need to do the following year. The school board changed. Their idea was, we gotta cut everything because we were seven million dollars in, in the hole. And one of the things that I got hit was the school play. And the school play, what had happened was the, the funding, they wanted them to be self-funded. So no money from the school nursery is from the ticket sales the year before to go to the budget of the next year. So my question is, how is this all been, uh, how is it being funded now? Because it seems like there's not enough money in budget to, to, you know, buy what they need to buy.
I, I will say, at the middle school level, to make a long story short, that actually I was gonna tell Valerie that I was gonna talk to her at the end of this meeting. Tell her some of the information I was able to find out. So before COVID, everything you said was correct. That, you know, previous year's sales was put aside and that was the minus C money to make the next play go on. Still true, but because we had a significant amount of turnover at the administrative level and the secretarial level and the person who was putting on the play, they didn't know where it was for the money. It's there and it's ready for you to disperse to put on this play. It's a significant amount of money.
Is it equally divided between middle school and high school?
The high school and the middle school from my understanding. Mid, or do I have to wait to ask that question? Because I thought that it was the high school funded their own and the middle school funded their own.
From the ticket sales.
From the ticket sales, yeah. That's, that's my understanding. It's not, it's not like a pool of money for both musicals and then we split it. It's each, each school has their own pot of money.
So are the students being charged an activity fee?
I never was.
Does that fall under the umbrella of activities?
I was never in charge an activity fee for being in the musical. You were?
Yeah.
Oh, I don't remember that. Oh, maybe my kids hit the limit of how many.
Yeah, we, we all end up hitting, and then we'll have a spot, but we're not assigned a spot. But.
So that I don't know.
So.
That, that's, that's, that is something I haven't found out.
So I think what my concern was how the money is being distributed. You know, some sports are covered a hundred percent.
Right.
Some other sports aren't. The other thing is the, there should be a, a well-funded budget for school plays.
Correct.
The ticket sales should stay in that pipe as well.
Yes.
So they need extra stuff to follow there, it can keep growing. And I, I really think that the school board really needs to look into how things are distributed. Especially if they're being charged an activity fee.
And I do believe that we have tried to look a little closer at, at being, being, treating that a little bit more, even across the board when it comes to, like, like you said, depending on what sport it is, some sports are more equal than others. And that's, you know, just the way it's always been, trying to make that a little bit more even. I, I think it's fair to say that we should be looking at that for the others or for us as well.
And my other final comment is, I think the, the community at home should be allowed to speak because I would like to comment more several other things that were in that line that I waited to the end.
I knew you did.
Because you only have three minutes.
Yep.
And.
Sometimes you have more if I forget the question.
There's things that I would have liked to say, but it adds up to you, still, President. You can, you are the ones who can.
Yes, sir.
So I would.
That's fair. Thank you, sir.
She does a good job. She does.
All right. Sorry, normally we don't have like end back and forth, but I asked those questions about the musical just recently, so I just answered them, so.
Tom Markle, Ursula. A couple weeks ago, last meeting, Diddy brought up a gender ideology material in Word Town Baseball. I wondered if another example of this. One great example, imported material available in baseball in Pennsylvania. In November two thousand and twenty-one, parents expressing concern about book available in Quicksound Baseball Library. Gender Fear in L G B T Q team called Graphic Adult Content Centering on Gender Ideology was available, was available, was brought to the attention of the school. Uh, that was, it was available in the school library, the high school library. Gender ideology, part of critical gender theory that is being pushed by Marxists. To be clear, this is a book that should not be available in any public school in the country. Not only is material beyond what the school should be providing as its critical gender theory, it is also graphic. It is graphic written depictions of sex acts with illustrations by a new definition of pornography. The Quicksound School District Board still voted five to four to allow the book to remain in the school library in January eighteen, two thousand and twenty-two. In May two thousand and twenty-two, the school board voted to add a parental consent form for students to check out pornography from the school library. The school board that is only allowing the book to stay in the library because the American Library Association approved of the book. American Library Association selected Emily Dobrasky as the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-four president of the A L A on April thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. Who is Emily Dobrasky, Dobrinsky? Well, according to Emily, she's Marxist. I cannot believe that a Marxist lesbian who believes the collective power of is possible to build in and can be wielded for a better world is the president-elect of the A L A library. T tweeted after she was selected as president of the A L A, A L A, excuse me. Last year, some parents brought to your attention critical race theory is part of the critical, of critical theory which has ties to Marxism. Critical gender theory is also Marxist ideology being pushed into our schools and in the case, in this case, organized and run by self-prescribed Marxists. I'd like to know if this book is in our library, middle school or high school. By any definition, this book is pornography and should not be in any school in the country. I do have a couple articles from the Red Eagle about this.
I just, that's all I'm looking for.
Shirt. Now he kind of lies about my shirt. I just can't see it all. If I send the articles to my wife, because I think they're announced to send it to guys, it's not gonna click up. Send out articles, she basically sees what's going on in our schools and things like that. Just nothing is happening here, just it's happening.
Yeah.
Being aware of someone. Starts creeping on our necks, or you guys already heard about it, it's nothing new, or things like that. There's the, um, one I'm going to talk about is that one of the math programs, the N Vision. N Vision, you know, I don't know what it's called, N Vision? But it's a D and I, as D and I embedded into it in math program. My, my, my call D and I is, uh, don't ever iterate, that's what I call it. But back on the D E I stuff. This is one of the articles. Arlington Public School D E I Director sends email directing teachers to tell kids that black cops killed Tyree Nichols due to internationalized racism because police came from racist slave catchers. That was the title of the article. My wife sent email, wrote, this is closer than home than I'm comfortable with. D E I programs support oppression thinking and nationalized concept of racism. I call, I believe this is not happening, Daniel Boone. We believe it's not happening. I do believe we cannot be blind and blatant and be blind to a blatant agenda to push these Marxist concepts through D E I programs. This is pure infiltration of the education system through nonsensical ideologies that are nothing more than assumptions or what universities consider theory slash progressive thinking. Daniel Boone is better than that. You do not have to go home with a quell and do a rating for the children in this community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Melissa Markey. One, I just would like to know, I love the camera. Are we using Stop Minder? Only because I looked up that ad and it's one star pedagogue. And I read a lot of comments and a lot of parents complained how it does not look. So that is one thing I would like to know. Another thing, my daughter goes to middle school next year. She's only fifth grade, she's a third, eighth graders. They take away their, they have no recess. I mean, and they're switching classes, they're so little compared to eighth graders. I used to be a school bus driver. I know the grade, their maturity level compared to at that time, sixth grade. I had them separated because of what they spoke about. We go to B C a lot. I see that equipment just sitting there rotting. Is there any way we can like take it and put it somewhere for those fifth graders to have recess? They're little. They should, they should have that. I C and P C compare percentage mornings. I hate dropping off at P C. I go to all three schools, high school, P C and I C. I hate going to P C. I get an attitude, I can't go there, especially if I drive it late. I'm, I just say, tell mom, tell your teachers, mom is being at hot mess morning. They laugh. But when you go to bed, drop off at I C, you have Mr. Becker there every morning, standing there, smile, security guard. Kevin smiling, waiting to everyone and two teachers there. Today, we caught construction on seven twenty-four, one laying down. And then also we got stuck behind a dump truck that was driving really slow. Then we got stuck behind a school bus going over railroad. Yeah, I should leave early, but it's Monday, my good morning. So we pulled up at eight thirty-nine and I got a lecture. Then I went to I C, but everybody's waiting to me. It's just completely different thing there. Also, can, mental health, I brought this up before. May is mental health awareness. And I think we do like Black History Month, like, um, school bus, Black School Bus Month. Can we look into like doing May all about mental, mental health? So kids are not like, it can open up more. I'm not strange, I'm not weird. I have these issues, it can open up, can we talk about it? Um, what else? Are we looking for a CFO? I have not, I, I got the email, got the superintendent CFO, I did not. Also, public reporting. I would really like to know, is it illegal to delete, to go through a public recording and delete certain sections? As Mike has been. And then someone spoke before. Oh, about sex, real sex. No, you said about survey.
And the loudest thing you said, right? I'm sorry.
No, no, because my nephew.
Was it a survey out of?
I know my minutes are.
Bucky, it's not the one you filled out.
It's about like high school.
Yeah.
This weekend, we, I have my nephew, he's only in second grade. We're sitting there eating and everybody's talking and then he looks over to my fifteen-year-old and yells loudly, hey, I heard in your school you are learning about S E X, is that true? I have girls, I don't have a boy. So my face drops and I just switch the conversation. And the older's like, did he just say, did he really just say that? But why is, why? And I told my sister and I'm like, she's like, I don't know, are they talking about it at school? Like, I know they have older sisters, but. Yeah.
Thank you, thank you.
When TikTok?
What?
They have TikTok, that's.
He does not have TikTok. My kids are not like.
Hey, hey, well.
For that reason.
Danielle Dackler in Beverly. So with some of the, or with the discussion about these. Um, so with some of the, or with the discussion about these MAP programs that are in review and some of the questionable topics in that? I have had meetings in the past with other school administration about the fact of other states trying to implement younger sex education in as young as kindergarten. So, if the fact of questionable MAP programs that are being considered, would you say that the next step isn't going to be trying to teach kindergarteners that? Boy, it's not the fact of like watching, what was it? Let's say Kindergarten Cup or Liar Liar, boys have penises and girls have vaginas.
There's no talk.
What's on my? Yeah, so, I mean, just teaching them the basics, but trying to teach that, all right, there are certain things that as adults should be behind closed doors. Kids should not be taught that. So, questionable learning, uh, programs through MAP? And then what's the next step that we don't want our kids taught at that age level? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, um, I did want to point out, oh, I apologize, go ahead.
Sorry, I think you've got.
No, no, no.
Bear with me, everyone, please, this is my first time, I've never been the.
It's always somebody's first time, right? You've always gotta have one.
All right, good evening, everybody. Um, Armando McQuinsey, um, and I'm here because I really want to talk about, um, the TSA middle school program. Um, my son, Harrison McQuinsey, started the middle school TSA program last year. Uh, he was so engaged, he loved it so much. It was just, when I say beaming, when he talks about it, beaming. It is one of the most fascinating, amazing extracurricular, um, programs, I think, that DMU has, especially for our kids that are STEM kids, right? Um, we had a fantastic, um, run last year. We had a really good program. Uh, we started having meetings early, early in the school year, so I mean, sometime in the fall. Um, and then, um, went on to regionals and everything rolled out really well. There was a ton of communication, um, the kids were completely engaged, the teens were completely engaged. Everybody just was, was all in. My son came home every day, just like smiling, he lived for TMI. Um, last year, they also went on to U.S. States. This year, um, the program, I think, has had quite a few bumps in middle school, quite a few headups. Um, I've had to rely on Mr. Oram quite a bit for information at the high school, um, just because I've reached out to the, the middle.
Yeah, um, I just wanted to say, you know, if you want to say like the high school TSA coordinator or the middle school TSA coordinator, just, you know, uh, if, if you mention a name, that's a personal matter, we're gonna have to check again, just, just mention what they do. Yeah.
Cool, okay. I appreciate that as a first timer.
Okay.
Um, but I think more than anything, my, my point was that I knew that the, um, the high school, uh, person, I, I reached out to him because my teacher or my daughter had him. And I got him last year at the program, super responsive, got back to me right away, tons of information. This year, um, in regard to like regionals or TSA in general, I've not received one email. I've not received any communication, I mean, nothing, not even, I didn't even know when the meeting started. My son didn't know when the meeting started, they found out about it at lunch, uh, talking amongst themselves. Um, and we've reached out multiple times to the coordinator and there's just no response, like whatsoever. I, I haven't heard anything. Um, I found out on Tuesday morning from another parent that regionals were this weekend. I didn't get any communication, I didn't know what time they were, I didn't know what time the bus was leaving, I didn't know what time they're coming back, I didn't know where they were. And again, high school coordinator was super helpful, I said, "Hey, help me out." He gave me all the details, because I reached out to the middle school and I didn't get any information back from that person. Um, and regionals this weekend, I know there were some folks that, that went and some folks that were actually, um, registered. Um, I can tell you my son and his team were never even registered. They went and, um, some of the kids there were, they had been working this whole time on different projects, uh, multiple events, and they got there and were told, "Sorry, you're not registered." Um, you can't participate, you can just stand there and watch. Lots of teary-eyed twelve-year-olds this Saturday, so I just wanted to someone to know. And usually I go to the school and I, I send emails, but I've been doing that since September and I haven't heard anything, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Yeah, I, yeah, yeah, good. And I want to second that, I'm Crystal Fleckenstein, um, my son is also a male schooler. And he's very young, shy and not very involved, doesn't want sports or anything like that. So, when we heard about this program from his friend, we were really excited to see her that, you know, try to push him into that direction because he's, um, he's a thinker and he's, he's just, um, he's not interested in, in getting out there and taking a whirl around. He, he's interested in how the world works. So, when we heard about this program, um, we were waiting patiently to hear more about it in school. When is it gonna be starting, what's, you know, when, when is the first meeting? Um, I ended up going to, um, coffee with the principal, um, it was an awesome program. Um, and I learned a little bit about it, I went there specifically, asked about the after-school program and, and he, um, and Mr. Powers, um, let me know that it's, it's supposed to start soon and took down Rich's name and, um, thought we were all good there, but time went by, time more time went by and then all of a sudden, Rich finds out at one time at the table that, you know, some of the kids are starting to meet, who go to these meetings and no, nothing ever came home saying that this is starting. Um, so, fast forward, he, you know, he gets to go to about five or six meetings at school and kind of doesn't get informed of how, what he has to do. You know, there's a lot of topics that you can join in on and, um, he ends up going along with a group of friends that kind of took him on his main, said, "Hey, just join our group, we'll help you through this." Because nobody was really helping him figure it out, like how to participate, what, what to pick. So, fast forward to this last week and we find out on Friday, not Tuesday, that tomorrow is the regionals and he didn't turn in a, a permission slip so your son can't go on the bus. And, um, we get him there, we made it work, we did come up to the school, we made sure we had a permission slip, got it through a mother, another mother. We get there and, um, he's, he's given a shirt, he goes to the program and he doesn't know the dress code, he's wearing jeans, they're supposed to be all dressed up. Nothing, nothing was communicated to us of how the program worked. It was unfortunate, I mean, my son had a blast, I mean, despite it all, he had a blast, but he could have, this really could have, it's a great program and it just sounds like it failed this year. Um, my understanding is only like twelve or thirteen middle schoolers were registered versus like forty. I, I don't know if that's true, but that's what I heard. And I heard that that was a slip, that, you know, because my son wasn't registered at heart much and he didn't actually get to participate, just went and watched. But yeah, so, just think there was a failed miss opportunity there, but hopefully next year it doesn't happen.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I just wanted to say one, one thing, um, actually, Mr. Becker alerted me to the fact that this week is, uh, school guidance council week. Um, and, um, I just want to say, you know, we always and forever appreciate our guidance consultants. They deal with way more than they should have to, but they're always willing to do more for our kids. So, I do appreciate that. Can I get a motion to adjourn? Can I get a second?
Second.
Okay, we are adjourned, thank you.